All right. School Board meeting for Tuesday, March 21st is called to order, 6:00 PM. And the rule call is that we are all here, and so let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Amanda, we are going to begin with the oath of office for you.
Okay.
And Jen gave you a copy.
Yeah.
And all you need to, did she show you where you, the part you need to read?
Yes, right at the end there.
There you go.
All right, so just read it.
Just go for it.
I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number?
499.
499, in the best of my judgment and ability.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excited to be here.
All right, I just was handed a couple of additions to our agenda. I think you all have a little paper on it, so additions to the agenda is 10 EB and 10 EC, as you have on this little slip. Does anybody else have any other changes to the agenda? Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve the changes that we made here to the agenda.
I move we approve the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, next, approval of the agenda with the changes added to it. So approval of agenda, looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? All right. Thank you. And any public input tonight? No? Okay. All right, recognition of good things happening. Welcome to Amanda Byrne, the new 499 school board member, and congratulations to the LO Elementary School for securing the Reading Core position. Reading Core is a breakthrough program that is changing academic outcomes for thousands of students. Also, congratulations to the Winter Artists and Athletes on an outstanding season. We are proud of their accomplishments. Thank you to the basketball teams for their generous donation to the Ronald McDonald House of $435.50, which they received on the 14th of February. Okay? Does anybody have any other recognitions? All right, thank you. We're going to move right on to student reports, or to our reports, and we're going to start with our student representative.
So some spring sports started yesterday, some started last week. Last two weekends, there's been basketball banquet's. Last week, we did money for Magnus at school. I think that's pretty much it.
Okay. So staff report from our student service team member.
Good job, Jenna. All right, so I have a lot. I will not speak about it all, but I do document it for you to have on behalf of the Student Service Center, myself, and everybody else that needs to see it. This is documentation. I do a pretty good job of documenting everything that comes through my office that I dealt with. Now, there's some times where I'm gone. Last Wednesday was the AD meeting. I have to be gone at that thing. I had fun about with COVID for about five days, and I got back the very next day I could get back. Until that test for a negative, I couldn't get back. So, I did everything I could. So here's kind of the nutshell, we can kind of go through it. I'm not going to go every piece by piece. I did a winner's sports cap from our school and from our kids, boys basketball, as you can see, finished 3-24 in 19C, lost first round of the play-in game. All-conference was, honorable mention was Camden Hungerhold. We did not get an all-conference member, we just got an honorable mention. Girls' basketball finished 7-21 on the year. Congrats to Jordan Runney scoring a thousandth point. As you can see, I updated the list already outside Jim. She ended her career with 1,001, so big time congrats. If you know anything about basketball, 1,000 points is a big deal, let alone 2,000 or 3,000. So, congrats to her. The all-conference team got two members of Jordan Runney and Benita Nolte on the top. I think it's 14, 15, 18. Girls had more. Honorable mention was Jenna Olson, so congrats to all of them. Rest of the team finished 13-8, one act play, which we got back. Last year, my first year as AD, we got that back. I think Chrissy did a phenomenal job. They met and aired an test every morning because of, to make sure kids could still play sports, then every morning at, what is it, 6:00? And her and who's the lady uptown?
Dawn Holquist.
Dawn Holquist put in tons of time for our one act play. They did a wonderful job. They finished third in the sub-district, only the top two move on. But considering the teams we've lost to, like a Southland, they've been doing this for many, many years. I'm very proud to see us that close and get that back. Spring sports up and running, like Jenna said. I updated the numbers there, started March 13th. Sophomore had six students. We are Grand Meadow, Leroy, Shreve King'sland. Track, we had 13 students. Grand Meadow, Leroy, Shreve King'sland, Southland. Baseball started, golf started yesterday. Baseball, we have six students. We have one golf. Golf has not officially started, that was with Neider yesterday. They're not going to be out there until it's time that they connect. So like Neider said, when the Adams opens up the driving range, they'll be out there hitting for sure. The only representative we have there is Lincoln Lunning. So, and Link, from what he said, should have a pretty good chat on making the varsity squad. I guess he's a pretty good developer, so hats off to that. Trap to start this Sunday, we have 24 students in that, so that's kind of your spring numbers and breakdown, so you guys can kind of see it. Some more information that we do through Athletic Department. The winter coaching evaluations are done and complete. I will meet with the head, two head coaches tomorrow before our coach meeting, put that stuff away. Anybody who thinks coming back for the summer for next year has already done their summer waivers, which you have to do in order to coach during the summer, so hats off to my staff, all of them, for getting that signed and done. I will bring you all the coaches in April for approval of what we have. We do have a couple, obviously, that have resigned, and maybe a couple more on the horizon, it depends on. It's a very difficult task coaching. So, look forward to the people we have here and the ones that can't be here, that is what it is, but take comfort in the ones we do have that bust their butt for our kids every day. So remember that. Football schedules will not be out until June. There's a restructure across the state of Minnesota, so I don't want to hear anything about homecoming or anything else, because I can't set that stuff until. We have a football schedule. I do not know. The appeals process just went through last Friday of the kids, the teams that were appealing down to 1A, et cetera, and nine men, so that's going to come out soon. Our Leroy, Shreve football staff will attend the Minnesota Football Clinic at the end of March. In April, I want all my staffs to do these things and go to these clinics. I think they're very important, just like I'll allow the school board goes to MSBA clinic, we have our own clinics to go to. And I think it's important to learn from everybody, including the Gophers and bigger cities, et cetera. So the dean of students, the information, you can see right there. I did see a tax graph, if you want to flip to that back page, not back page, but it kind of looks like this. This is the number of S reports. Again, I don't have to fill these out, but I think the reports are pretty good, and I can get these things done in a moderately quick time. I'm not that savvy, but not too bad, but it's a pretty visual. It goes back to 2015, 16. Blue is in first quarter, orange is in second quarter. It tells you the Fs that we had according to our school district. So as you can see where we're at now. So obviously, 50, 2018 was COVID. That was an obvious massive jump. And see where we're at right now. We had 10 S first quarter, 9 S second quarter. Look at the graphs. I'm not going to float my boat and sit here and say student service is the greatest thing in the world, but let's just say some things do work if you allow us to get it done.
Is that 7 through 12?
That is 6 through 12.
6 through 12.
That is, everybody we have, 6 through 12. So sometimes those numbers can be big, but it is what it is. So, I'm on these kids every single day. You can ask them. It is, I just had a medical check myself, and my anxiety and stress levels are very high. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, and that's just a fact, and that's just the truth. So I think we're doing a better job through the interventions and through student services. It takes a village, but some of the visions that our administration decided to do are actually panning out pretty successfully in this regard. If you don't want me to do the job, I can find somebody else to do it, not a big deal. But I think we're doing a pretty damn good job, and I would advise anybody to take the job and do a better job.
Well, you just have to look at the numbers from the beginning of that graph.
Yes.
Compared to what they are today.
And those are just S.
No brainer.
Those are just S. So that's some dean of students stuff that you can read right there. Now we can go on to RCD. We have some behavioral stuff. It kind of shows where the RCD is at. Like I put in bold, this represents just the kids that are sent to my office. This is not saying a kid got in trouble at school, they RCD'd him, he stayed in the classroom. These are kids that just got removed from class. Obviously, our goal for this RCD is 100%. Then RCDs work right now, some teachers, especially right now. It is difficult. It is difficult to find traction. It is difficult if it's not home, students, family, administration, teacher, all on the same page. It is difficult. I can promise you right now. Bullying is an obvious issue. From February 15th to February 19th, we had three cases of bullying. Two cases were determined peer conflict. A student and parents were informed the discipline was handed out where needed. The other case was, as aforementioned, in question. Now, here's what I mean by in question. And I'm going to go to my other sheet for this. If you go to discipline, if you go to bullying, to interventions, if you go to the National Center Against Bullying, you don't have this written down, but if you go to bullying is an ongoing deliberate misuse of power relationships through repeated verbal, physical, social behavior, intensive or positive physical harm, et cetera, et cetera, but it's got to be repeated. Got to be repeated. I got to be able to see it. You can't just have one person say they got bullied. Take my job. Want to come to it? Do it. Come to it. 95% of them, even though mom and dad say that their little kids have never lied to them in their whole lives, you tend to find that it's not always the truth. But it takes me two hours to make sure. I intervention, I talk to the kids. Almost every parent that comes to do my thing, I get call on parent. I call parents myself. I let them know what's going on. I can't tell them who the students are. I can't give them all the information, but I can do some other things. So, here is a list that I do. I keep track. I'm not going to give it to you because I can't, but I did remove the names in case anyone's got great vision, unlike Aaron. So here's a page, here's a page, here's a page, here's a page. This is what I keep track of. If kids come to my office for a reason, anything in green is anything kind of bullying. So if you didn't come to my office and report it, I cannot say it's a bullying issue. I can't. You have to have the power to come talk to me about it. I can't fix this unless I know about it. If there is an issue with bullying, I bring them in, I talk to them, I talk to the kid that's perverted going on, and then Aaron can attest how many percentage of those two kids had a bullying issue in the very next day, they should eat at the lunch table, goofing around with each other, often. What I see especially in the expansion in the elementary is, my kid can be included, he said something to Billy, Billy said something to him, he went home and said, Billy told you this, but they didn't tell the whole conversation. Or social media, which is probably the worst bullying that I see right now in general is social media. I deal with that every day. Every day. Every single day I deal with social media, and then I get sent videos, et cetera, et cetera, because everyone's perfect. It's not. Parent takes a picture of the video, takes a picture of the comment, takes a picture of the picture. They'll send that in. This is bullying, this is harassment. I agree it is. But then the other parent, who I'm talking to, saying that they are the ones doing it, will send me the same picture with all of the information on there, and then little Billy's down here just running his mouth. There is issues on that. I can't help it if it doesn't come through me, end of the day. And just like my own son is fifth grade, I do have to empower him to handle some things. I can't pass and be the hovering dad to come over. Now, if you want to say some things are uneven, I'm not fair, that's fine. You know what's not fair? When I'm sitting at supper with myself, with my family, and my son goes, Dad, how come you can't defend me like you defend everybody else? Because if I do that, it's nepotism, right? Because it's my son. So if anything happens with my son, Aaron, who gets that call? Who gets it? Aaron does. That's not fair. So these are the bullying issues we have. I would like us to be honest and open about these kind of concepts as it comes through me. There is no kid that I will leave left behind. I know that's an old thing. There's not one. I have taught, not that I'm old, but what, seventh, the eighth, the ninth, the 10th graders? Molten for multiple years. I know most of the parents. I either send a parent a text message, which is probably inappropriate, or Facebook, I'll get a hold of them somehow, some way, and let them know. If your kid has missing assignments, Dave, have I called you?
More than on my hand.
Yes. It's an easy conversation to have, because most of the time, the kid will go home saying, see, here's my missing assignment sheet, they're all done, and the parent says, okay. Well, that's not always the truth. So I'm on them in that. But these are things that have to come through my stuff. But there's also bullying, there's adult bullying. I've been there. I've been through the whole gauntlet. And one of the big things that I have to talk about, and this is about bullying, is lying, rumors. That stuff is garbage. We teach our kids, we need to talk to these people, but we saw if we go downtown, we'll just spread a rumor like it's crap. Some of the things I want to address, the things that I've heard, and these are things I go to Aaron and Jenna about because I think they're just trash, and it's not what we're teaching our children. The one for example would be, here's my problem, I had 10 people talk to me about this problem. My first question's going to be, who's the 10 people? I can't tell you. Dave, your shirt's ugly. I had 10 people come tell me. In reality, the only people that cared about your shirt were me and my wife. So can I use that as a basis that I had 10 people come and talk? No. Come talk to me. I'm the easiest guy to talk to, and Aaron Hungerhold is probably easier than I am. I don't think Aaron gets mad ever. Come talk. Jenna's by far the easiest superintendent we've ever had to talk to. If you want to, I could go through stories for you. Easiest one we've ever had to deal with. But if we don't want those answers, that's life. But those are things that got to stop. Another situation that we need to stop bullying is, something happened four years ago. What was we going to do about it? See, it's been happening for every year. Okay, well, here's my documentation. I showed you that. I had, today we have social bullying in a certain grade level, some girls, and we dealt with it. And then the girls wrote an apology, and then talked to them. It all happened because of a boy. Two hours of my life down the drain, but we handled it. We handled it. That's got to stop. Four years ago, a lot of things happened four years ago. I know that we have a stop app, correct, Aaron? Correct me if I'm wrong for bullying. How many reports did we get on that app? By the way, our kids are on their phone every day, every two seconds. We had an app that said what?
They could announce the report bullying, and we used it for two years and zero reports.
So, there was a technology piece that we tried, but it's got to come to me. It has to come to me. Any of these issues have to come to me, and I can handle it right there. But if it's automatic, jump to Jim. We're not following chain command, are we? Another thing we've got to stop talking about is that I can't come in and talk to them. I've heard that before. We're very inappropriate, it's hard to approach us. We have to be able to come have a conversation. I had one with Aaron the other day, and it did not easy. I disagree with Aaron quite often on certain subjects. I had an issue with my own son. I can't come marching in and just demand something. I have to know that there's another piece. My son isn't perfect. He had a kid on, for sure, correct? He said something that he possibly should have said. It's life. But I can't. Retaliation is a word I hear all the time, and I don't know what honest adult has retaliation. If that's what people think, then that's what you must be thinking in life. I'm so tired of that word retaliation. So here's what I'm going to tell you is retaliation. If I say something now, and then you retaliate by firing me, saying something to my kids, then it's retaliation, right? It's not, it's not true. I've never done anything like that. I've never heard anybody do these things, but these are all complicated, put with bullying. I've never seen it, guys, I've never seen it. I'm here all day. I'm here, here, well more than my own kids, and we all know that. But retaliation's just got to stop. That's just the way you're going to hide it, hide things, and that's, again, part of the bullying. And like I told you, what about adult bullying? If you go downtown and gossip, it's not true. That term is bullying according to the National Center Against Bullying. So if our facts aren't facts, let's make sure that they are facts, because I've heard enough rumors, and I think if we can fix those things, we'll be okay. Culture. I presented on culture last year after the coaches clinic. PJ Fleck did a big thing on culture. I'm not going to go through my presentation right now, but a couple of things that I wanted to speak about quickly, again, I don't want to be up here forever, are the song, "The Bones" by Maran Morris. Have you ever heard of that song? It's a country song. It's a wonderful song. She's got a great voice, la la la. But there's some words in there, I'm going to talk to my coaches tomorrow, that says, when the bones are good, the rest don't matter. The house don't fall when the bones are good. That's culture. If we're going to keep destroying culture, then we got to protect the house from falling. And that's the truth. That's the truth with athletics. That's the truth with academics. That's the truth with everything. We can agree to disagree, but our culture's got to continue to improve. Build the Nest is a slogan I say a lot. People make fun of me, and Jenna does all the time. It is a cheap shot of PJ Fleck and row the boat, and I'm not that creative, and I have no problem admitting that. But there's many things to it. I've talked to about a dozen Hall of Fame coaches that I respect. Gary Sloan, Wayne Grindy, coached across the area, and I asked them the simple question, what are three things that make your program better? Just three. And through that, I built a Build the Nest program of what are important. Shared purpose, shared vision, respect, and trust, desire, dedication, commitment, discipline, be demanding on kids. Some of the upsides of the stuff, communication, adaptability, chemistry, sense of urgency is one that I saw a lot. Kids need to have a sense of urgency, because tomorrow's not guaranteed for anybody in here. Conflict resolution, toughness, both physical and mental, doing the little things. And most importantly on this one, was understand your role. Not every kid can score 50 points a game. It's a fact. You got to understand that you got to rebound, you got to do other things. Not every person can score a touchdown, right, Mr. Stern? But for anybody to score a touchdown, what does that have to have?
The other eight got to do their job.
Yeah, they got to do their job. The Hogs got to get the work done up front. They don't get the glory and the glitz. That's just the truth. I think those are things that we can continue to build on for that. As you go down here, I need a checklist for the seniors and the juniors, as an updated stuff. You can see exactly how many students we have that are all in check to graduate. Last check was February. It tells you exactly who's in the workforce, et cetera. Some of the career examples of what they're trying to go into, and I'll check again in May. I've checked at the beginning of the year, I've checked in the middle of the year, and I'll check again. By the way, if you think that what they did in the middle of the year, or beginning of the year is what they're doing right now, check again, because it changes like that. I've had one that's going to be something, then all of a sudden, they're going to teaching, and next thing you know, they're straight going into laying cement. It's crazy. The juniors is even crazier, even crazier. They're the same thing, they're all in track to graduate. We're doing a pretty good job with that. Smaller, a little smaller class, we see the examples. I'll check again in May again, and then next year, I'll bring sophomores in, and they'll be now juniors, and we'll do the same kind of thing. This is kind of what you'll get. You'll see it at the back of your packet. I have it exactly laid out, but what I do, it's so you can see it. College crew readiness, April 26th. There's a Minnesota Twins game for sophomores and juniors to attend. Outside of that, there's a bunch of things that they can go to and booze and check things out. May 17th is the SMAC Expo. That's for sophomores and juniors and any seniors that still haven't really decided on things. Not left out, but we're not going to say they can't come if they haven't decided, which 17-year-old kids, it's difficult to decide what you want to do the rest of your life. Attendance for the first quarter and second quarter, you can see those, veritably the same, similar. Congratulations to junior class at 97%, the fifth grade class at 95, almost 96%. Those are pretty good numbers that they are attending. We do have the same ones that if you think miss, they're probably missing tomorrow. But overall, kids are getting their butts here, and once they're here, they're getting the studies done, which means grades will go up, et cetera, et cetera. Some of the recent purchases I put on, some of the things that we purchased through athletic program, I want to always be honest and open as much as I can with that. Again, I don't need to. Future current plans, anything in yellow on the back, you'll see is stuff that we've done, stuff that's not yellow, the things that are projects that we're trying to get accomplished that we haven't touched in a long time athletically. We haven't done a lot. Our crow's nest was just built, but it's going to fall. Olshe's going to tell you that next time they have a report. Walking up the stands, if you're over 200 pounds, watch out.
It's crazy.
I didn't say you're over 200. I'm just saying, in general, in general, you're spout. Small gym floor is obviously huge. That's a big thing to talk about. The football field grass, regardless, we want to talk about, is a mess. We have more crabgrass on the football field than I've ever seen before. Once that thing freezes up, our grass is gone, and it comes off like a bald man's toupee in a convertible. New backboards in the small gym are things that need to do. Those gym, those things are from 1940, probably need to be updated. Indoor concession stand, we're always trying to find a better place. I'd like to do a permanent place for Ryan to stage his stuff, if Ryan continues to do it. Front door privacy decal, just got that. I gave, I'm getting a quote from that. Peyton just got the stuff for that this morning, so we worked on that, me and Peyton. Oh, weight room program. Here's again, you don't have to look at this either. This is a program that we say that kids can't lift weights because we have no program. Well, that's not the case anymore. This program is designed for all athletes, boys and girls. You'll need to know what it even means half the time, but it was approved by a trainer who's, and then our own trainer, Jim Williams, I talked to today. So this is a program that everybody can use, family-friendly, heck, even adults that feel that they want to use it. I know Nick Sweeney's using it as we speak every morning. It says everything you need to know about weightlifting in there. It's our program, what we should do daily. It decided what you're going to eat nutritionally. It's a pretty good program. Jim Williams said the same thing this morning. We adjusted some things, so that's a brand-new one. We adjusted a couple of things that were on the old one, and I reprinted those out for you today and corrected the things that Jim said to correct, just minor things. But overall, very good, put people on the same path. Future ticket items that cost a lot of money in our school, we don't have budgets to pay Future ticket items that cost a lot of money in our school, we don't have budgets to pay for them. We need a new Cardinal mascot. Period. Well, guess what? I took the money we got from fundraising and bought cheerleading and our public school sent us them a brand-new mascot. So they have the feet, they have the beak, they have everything in there, they're gonna look great. Fifteen hundred bucks that came out of the advertising money, fifteen hundred straight up. Boom. Headsets are old. Technology-wise, if you didn't go to the state tournament, ours couldn't be used in the bank and ours couldn't be used at Wheaton. We had interference. Everyone's got a cell phone nowadays, ours are too old, the technology wasn't good. Had to update. Luckily for us, I swayed them into a twenty-two-hundred-dollar trade-in value on stuff that probably wasn't worth three hundred. I used a thousand dollars in my football account because I think that as an A D, if I use all the fundraising, that's gonna be, look bad, isn't it? So I took half of my money and paid for it. And then used another thirteen out of the athletic fundraising budget to buy brand-new ones. Bought them, they came two days later. Awesome people to work with by port of phone. Bible has a machine they wanna get. Our football field benches are rotten and probably gonna fall and break within, if they lasted the summer, holy crap. Our football field session stand is a dump. Obviously, Steve O'Byrne gave us a quote. Thank you, Steve. Steve helped us with the small, with the football field stuff as well. He's gonna do small stuff, obviously, it's on you guys' agendas and other things. And then we talked about that. So I know that's a lot. I gave you all the information that I can give you from an A D position. I gave you all the stuff from a Dean of Students position. I gave you all the stuff that I need, that I think is kind of under our film. Is there any questions regarding anything that we need to talk about? I will certainly take anything on. I know that's a lot, but I only have to do this every once in a while.
And maybe we wanna acknowledge the rest of your team up there. I think they're doing a good job. Georgine works up there with you in the student center? I mean, it'd be nice to acknowledge that she's also a part of the team. Yes?
Sure. I didn't get the announcement of thank you either, so I'm just presenting the thing. But Georgine is our substitute teacher.
I mean, she, yeah, but doesn't she do some of this work too? She does?
Some of the credits, yeah.
Work meets with the seniors and things like that. I know, but I'm just saying, we are giving you credit for it. You are getting taken credit by me.
She does, Georgine does that, but she is extremely busy subbing every day. I mean, she does the stuff. I don't know, Erin, what is it daily? I mean, give or take. Barbie does a good job of testing. Probably too good, probably. So Barbie does the testing, I got the testing information from Barbie. The career readiness stuff went through Georgine and the Minnesota Twins because Mel did it last year. So she kinda jumped on board with that one and then she helped with the SMAC incident as well. But otherwise, yes, I would agree. Georgine is phenomenal. Sub and Barbie does a good job up there doing a billion different things at a billion different times, which is chaotic in the student service center every day. Kids come in, kids come out, but I would agree with you. Yes, I didn't know where you were going with this. I didn't know what.
I just, you know, I just know that she does some of these things.
Yes, but I'm the one that presents on it, puts it all together. She's here, she wants us to.
Well, I'm just saying, we could put her name in with this because it's part of it.
Absolutely. She does a lot of that, et cetera. Any questions regarding that kind of stuff? Kind of hope I hit just about anything I could, so there wouldn't be a lot of questions. I have no problem answering. Good? Give you everything I got.
Thanks, Trevor.
Thank you. Alrighty. Principals report.
All right, well, end of the third quarter unbelievably is already coming up on March thirtieth, so it's getting winding down there, so it's kind of amazing. So yesterday, we had staff development with the consortium we had over in Grand Meadow. So that would be a good idea just to kind of let you guys know kind of what we do for staff development for teachers. I've talked about their evaluations in the past, I've talked about student supports. But this is kind of like our teacher supports for staff development. So they have ten days scheduled in their contract. Some of the topics that we've covered this year. Curriculum writing and research, trauma-informed presentation, which was yesterday. Grade level meetings and department meetings, which was yesterday too. So they got to meet with their, you know, we obviously only have one third-grade teacher, one second-grade teacher. So they got to meet with the other, you know, third-grade teachers from the consortium and the second-grade teacher, so forth. So they got, they get an opportunity to meet with each other and talk about classroom stuff. We're continuing with the Responsibility Center Discipline. We had epilepsy training this year. CPI training, which is Nonviolent Crisis Intervention. IXL training, which is our assessment platform and program. We're always working on MCA testing strategies in preparation. We give the teachers opportunity for licensure renewal. There's a bunch of, there's about six to eight now. I mean, there's so many more requirements for M D for the licensure renewal for teachers. We are continuing to work in our P L Cs, our professional learning communities. We had an internet safety training and infinite campus training because there's so many things that go along with that piece. Also, teachers always have the opportunity to extend, attend staff development outside of the district. All they have to do is fill out some paperwork that goes through our staff development committee for approval. So just a couple of things that we do. I mean, in all of our other days, we have to, along with certain trainings like that, we have committee meetings, different planning sessions, stuff like that too. So this was kind of the topics that we talked about, but there's a lot of other things that go on too, those staff development days.
Erin, can I jump in and add something to that? I talked with a couple of different teachers just to get their feedback on their opportunities. They're getting good opportunities to have staff development. And they had a very positive response to that, that they did feel very supported and that they would get opportunities to do staff development. So that was a really good, positive.
Yes, very good, thank you, Devon. Alice Drill, I am working with, we are gonna have an Alice Drill in May and that is gonna include our fire department, EMT and Mauer County. I talked to everyone today and they told me just pick a Friday in May and they will make it work. So I've been in contact with all those people, so I'll let you guys know. So maybe if you're around, you can kind of see it. You can even come into the building and kind of watch it from the inside out if you'd like to on how we run the Alice Drill. So I'm not sure of any other schools around here that do it. So I'm kind of proud that we do and our town and fire and EMT are all on board with what we do. So pretty cool. Hopefully, we never have to use it, but I feel that we are very prepared to the best of our abilities if something not so nice happens around here. So I'll keep everybody posted with that. Will be a Friday in May. Bowling presentation. I've talked about Judy Bruner in the past, who had helped me create our bowling policy. We haven't had her back for some time, so we are gonna bring back Judy or her partner in August on one of our staff development days. We are planning on doing a teacher presentation or workshop during the day and then a parent presentation in the evening. And they also assist with, like I said, our policy, but they've already done that. I already sent them our current one, which they helped create because they work with different schools and other thing nationally on legal stuff. So it looks pretty good. We had maybe one minor suggestion on some things, but I think we had a pretty solid one in place because they'd helped us with it before. I mean, I didn't create it, it was professionally done for us. So they will help us tidy that up and update that as needed. Just so you kind of know the background of Judy Bruner and her company, it's Ed Leaders Network based in Missouri. She's the Chief Education Officer of Instructional Solutions and she is a group clinical faculty member at Missouri State University. She's an author, consultant, co-founder of EduSafe. And her educational expertise is bowling and classroom management. So a little bit of background on Judy and what she does. So I can call her, I can text her, I can email her and she responds to me almost immediately. So those are the connections that, you know, I've been lucky enough to make over the years with these experts on things. So hopefully, that will come to what we need to do too in August, but I'll keep you guys updated on that as well. Right now, kind of my, taking up most of my time right now and Nikki and I are, we're working on registration already for next year. Working on teacher assignments and scheduling. March and April, hopefully, I wanna be done at the end of March here and then have our registration night for the parents. We will continue that over Zoom, that's been well-attended. And then our master schedule will come to you guys probably in April, I hope. It might be May, but then the students, they get their schedules before they go home in May. So if they wanna drop our ad or move things around, we try to get that done before June first. So that way, we can have everything set in place. We have class lists, we can have all these things, teachers can plan. When I first got here, a long time ago, we used to not give them the registration until I showed up first day of school in high school and they had two weeks to drop an ad. Well, you could have a class of fifteen, all of a sudden you have a class of four and then all these different switches. So that was one of the changes we made a couple of years ago, is try to get all the schedules done before they go home in June. I mean, we still have a couple and that changed our mind over the summer, but it's very minimal comparative way it used to be. So I just think it just helps good for our planning and our staffing. So that's what we're working on right now. So that's got it. Some new stuff I wanna just kind of share with you guys. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Superintendent's report.
All right, I apologize, I have a little tickle in my throat tonight, so if I'm coughing tonight, I'm really sorry.
Need the Smarties.
I should've had candy here. You're right. You're right. All right, well, good evening, everybody. I just have a couple of things. Friendly reminder, I have been emailing you about our Highway Fifty-Six project. Keep in mind, it'll be this fall when we first start tackling that. Erin and I attend quite a few meetings and of course, Mindat does show up at our front door often to talk to us about it to make sure we're prepped and ready. The biggest thing is will be the easement by the corner where the stop sign is. They're gonna have to take that out, that little corner diamond shape there and also some trees, but that'll happen this fall. I'll continue to update you and we'll update our community once we get a little bit forward too on that. We'll put it on the website. Don't forget spring activities. I know both Jenna and Trevor mentioned it, but our kids work so hard and it's so fun to get out there and watch them. So if you have an opportunity, please do that. We do post all the activities online, so if you're wondering or can't find them, let me know and I'll find it for you and send it to you. Don't forget too, I hate even bringing this up, but with winter still upon us unfortunately, three of us were just talking earlier, there might be snow on Thursday. Please be reminded too that our next, if there is, big if, if there is a snow day or weather emergency day that I will call, that is an e-learning day for our community. And so we have communicated that out to our parents. It continues to be on our website, but we will make sure. I email our staff pretty early in the morning and text this guy really early in the morning to get feedback, but we do communicate really early, so then our parents in turn know very early of what's going on too. But just a friendly reminder of that. Hard to believe, but I wanna formally invite you to our graduation that is up and coming. Our office staff, senior advisors, they're already starting to talk about this. And so you're gonna get further communications from both Erin and I as we approach that date too, so be prepared for that. Sure enough, we are halfway point, just over halfway point of the congressional session. And oftentimes, I'll send out a lot of legislative issues for you that they're talking about that I believe are meaningful to this district or even meaningful to me as a parent. And so I'll send them to you. This Friday though, is kind of the next deadline for legislation. So tomorrow, I'll be online on a webinar and I'll get more information. But hopefully by Friday, I'll get even more to share with you or maybe by early next week. Because sure enough, by probably, I believe, I wanna say it's like April fourth is the deadline for basically the finance committee's kind of a general, pretty solid idea of what they wanna do for us. So once I get that, I'll send that off to you. Big thing that did come out though, after our special session, it just happened that day and we talked about it briefly and I believe you are Angie, no, Angie, you brought up compensatory dollars. The free lunches did pass, so that's all taken care of. The governor did sign it last week. We are though unsure of when it's going to take place. That has not been brought forward yet. We don't know if it's gonna be the summer session, because a lot of schools do provide free meals in the summer, or if it's gonna be this fall. And of course, I'll let you know when that happens and we'll be sure to connect with our families about that. But we just don't know details yet, so we don't wanna get it out there until we know. So kind of keep that in mind too when I start sending you stuff, that that's all coming. Poor Dylan was, he was like a track star today, I have to tell you, I was so impressed. We got this crazy email, some of us did, related to kind of a phishing type thing. So cybersecurity, of course, is very important to us. And the school district does have cyber insurance if anything should happen. But Dylan today caught it, went to every single computer, teacher computer, staff computer in the district and cleaned it to make sure it was okay. So thank you, Dylan, for doing that, shout out to you. We will continue to train, notify, assess situations as they come. But just for a peace of mind, please know we do have cybersecurity insurance, just so you know. Finally, I do have to publicly report this. Our school radon test came back and they came back great, our test results. You probably saw that in the email I sent you. We are under that negative or that four number, which we were hoping for. And I was a little surprised because I would like to suggest, and Cass, Dylan, you guys, Erin, correct me if I'm wrong. I was thinking it would be maybe thirty, forty, fifty percent of our rooms. It was closer to ninety percent of our rooms. Had these radon tests, the bags that hang in the corner. And so this is a good sign, this is a good sign. So our radon testing assessment will be housed in the district office for anybody to see anytime they want. But I do have to publicly recognize the assessment came back, good or bad, but it came back good. So that's good, that was a big one. Let's see. Oh, here's part of it too. Oh, another thing with testing, we go through I E A. That's our, kind of our environmental assessment programming people. They're like a mock OSHA. All schools go through them. They help us in case OSHA does come, right? They pre-assess things, they help us through stuff. So we also utilize them, and I'll talk about this later on, maybe this spring, but we use them for staff development too. So for example, when I came on board here, our custodial staff was not trained in certain things. So we are lucky enough to now have, now this is three years back now, contracted with them that every year, once a year, if not more, we can train our custodians in certain things they need to know. But they'll do that for us too. So when the radon testing came about, remember that it only happens X amount of years, I kind of got trained on how to do things and what I can expect from the whole assessment piece and how to speak on it and communicate it out to staff. So huge shout out to I E A as well. Otherwise, I think that's about it tonight. I didn't wanna take up too much of your time, but thank you.
Any questions for Jen? All right, thank you. All right, we are going to move on to the consent agenda. We had April, April. We, approval is what I meant to say. Approval of the January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Approval of the February twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three regular minutes. So everybody got a chance to look at those. And then the treasures reports. We did not have any fundraisers listed. And then we have for personnel under E A, approved the retirement of Trudy Math effective June first, twenty-twenty-three. And then we added in ten E B to accept the resignation of Sean Kennedy as the junior varsity girls basketball and C to accept the resignation of Cassidy Milks for junior high girls basketball. All right? Does anyone have any questions as to the consent agenda? All right, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now with the policy action items, we are going to, we are doing policy review second reading on nine oh four, nine oh five, nine oh six and nine oh seven. And when we, I was at the policy meeting, there were no changes or any recommendations to change anything for any of the nine hundred series there. So if anyone would like to make a motion that we would approve the second reading of those policies.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of nine oh four, nine oh five, nine oh six and nine oh seven.
The second piece? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Policy review for the first reading of the policies, one oh one and one oh one point one, one oh two, one oh three and one oh four. And the only changes that we had at the policy meeting, I don't know if you had a chance of it. Jen and I are gonna look more carefully at one oh two. There's just been some changes from what we had on file for the two thousand and one to now, just a few changes of where the wording is. But we're just gonna read through it a little bit more carefully, make sure there aren't any actual changes other than just this is moved down to E and this is moved up to C. And then in one oh four, we're just going to be adding our new mission statement and our new, in the policy that you got online, it just has, like, here's a sample of what, an example of the mission statement and we're gonna actually put our mission statement and our vision statement in on that. So those two will go back to policy and that's the changes we're thinking about doing. Anything to add on that, Erin?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So I'm looking for an approval on first reading of policies, one oh one, one oh one point one, one oh two, one oh three and one oh four.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of one oh one, one oh one point one, one oh two, one oh three and one oh four.
Thank you, and second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. One of the trainings that I took, they recommended that your donations are not in the consent agenda but that they are on your regular agenda and that we do motion to approve them on their own. So we're gonna do that. So under donations, we got a donate, or the school got a donation from Susie's Roadhouse for eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for student milk money. And that's for the elementary student milk break, so money for that. And so we really appreciate that and we, I would accept a motion to approve or to accept the donation from Susie's Roadhouse.
I move with graciously accept the donation from Susie's Roadhouse and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Discussion and approval of the second reading of the school district calendar. Toss that over to you.
Do you bet?
Well, similar to last month, no changes. We, like I said before too, and we believe this is an important process, developing the calendar. You know, it's just not a unilateral, hey, Erin, when's your vacation?
Jen, when would you like a vacation?
No, we do get our staff involved, certified and non-certified. But also, because we're so heavily involved in our neighboring school districts in terms of the consortium, we really want their input from the principals, superintendents, special ed director, all of that. And so coming forward tonight is the same one that you saw at last month's meeting. So I would highly recommend, because it did go through the vetting process, to be approved tonight.
Okay, so I will accept a motion to approve the second and final reading of the school district calendar for twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four.
Isn't that crazy?
Yeah.
It's crazy, talk like that.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the twenty-three, twenty-four school district calendar.
Okay, and second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion and approval of the prom advisor judge. Discussion and approval of the prom advisor job description.
So I was asked to develop a prom advisor job description. So I did reach out to a couple colleagues, and then I also reached out to our current prom advisors, as well as our EA president. I like to get her advice on these things, because that does fall under their contract, but then also our activities director, as he is a big part of all our activities. And so we all sat down, I sent this, well, I sent this off, had him give me feedback, and sure enough, this is what we came up with.
Did everybody get a chance to look through this? Okay. So I will, I'm looking for a motion to approve the prom advisor job description.
Make motion to approve the prom advisor job description.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, we need to E, discussion and approval of the health insurance conversion date authorization.
Yes.
You have this again, Jen?
Yep, nope, no problem, no problem. You received an email forward from me here last week, but both Dave and Pat were part of kind of the initiation of this discussion way back on, when was it? March 8th, March 8th. We started talking to union representations, so our two largest unions, which is the certified staff, our teachers, and our non-certified staff, such as our paras, custodians, those folks. And then we also had board representation at the meeting. But what this was about was, there's only two school, approximately two schools within our region that have odd renewal dates for our insurance, and we have in the past have always had it early September. Most schools, because they want to be in line with business-minded people, have January start dates. So in order for us to move to a January start date, because of where we're at right now, it's a 16-month conversion date to get to that point. Also, to identify that date, we had to get voting done by our two largest unions in the district, our non-certified and certified. They did meet last week, both separately, and both came back with a positive yes. They vote on the conversion date to a January 1st conversion date outside of that September. So then, that's why we're here tonight. Am I missing anything, Dave and Pat?
Well, the, the advantage would be that we have more options and possibly lower the cost of our insurance.
Right. When we go out for bids, which we do often, now we're in the same dates.
When you're in an odd time of the year, you don't get those same options.
Yes, good point, yes, yes. Okay.
So it's, it's a logical thing to do.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
I'd make a motion that we approve the, whatever it says.
Health insurance conversion.
Health insurance conversion date.
Yeah, thank you.
To January 1st.
And second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Discussion and our approval of the ISD 499 school district strategic plan. So I got this from Gary, and this is the final tidy version of it. Jen printed them off for us. So it has our belief statements that we worked on over the first couple of days when we met, our mission statement, our vision statement, and then our focus areas, our strategic plan focus areas. So student achievement and support, and that really ties in a lot with the world's best workforce, which, you know, we're staying on top of that really well. So, but we want to continue to make sure we're reaching all of our goals in the world's best workforce, and that will include then our student achievement and support. So community, communications, outreach and marketing, we have a couple of goals in that And then leadership, we have three goals in that area. And then facilities, we have our goal eight. And within each goal, then we have objectives to work on. So our job now as the board is to approve this, and to pass it on to Jen and Erin as starting to, how they are going to start making these objectives happen in our school district. So our job first and foremost tonight is to approve the final strategic plan. And then, we want to start using our mission and mission statements on all of our letter head, and just really, really get to know what that is, and, and I think that all of us who are participating in this was really important to us, that students was the first or second word.
Nope.
And, and that's how it did come out, that this is about our students. We want our focus to be about our students, and then we'll, we'll pass on to our administration to start working away at the objectives. Okay? Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
We will post it on the website too, once you approve tonight.
Right.
Give us some time, we'll post it on our website. And as Deb said too, it's going to be put out in, you know, our letterhead, in newsletters. We want all of our teachers to have it posted in their classrooms, available for anybody to see too.
I guess I have one question.
Yes, yes.
And I just, and I just noticed it, I'll read you through it.
Okay.
So if we look at on the goal one, back there in objective 1.1.
Okay.
So if we meet in May, and we establish a plan, and how we're going to meet the five goals, right? Can I read that right? Okay, so in May, we're going to make a plan. Does everybody read that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then it says in August, we're going to evaluate that plan.
Let me see what this says here. Establish an advisory committee.
We don't have students.
To identify and plan opportunities. Establish an advisory committee to identify and plan opportunities to meet the five goals.
So that would be okay for, so we're planning for what we want to do for next year?
Right.
I think we talked about it, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. But then, unless it August 24th, it'll be 2024.
I think it's 2024.
I think it's supposed to be 2024.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted to make sure before posting it, because I'm like, okay, we're going to plan in May and evaluate in August.
And then, and then not everything that's here.
I'm sorry, guys, nothing, thank you, thank you.
We're done.
We have no kids, no staff.
Yeah, what's the problem, what's the problem there?
Yeah, that's.
Because I could, because October 2023, yes, we can do staff development.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Because that was that down there. And just that, that.
That should be 2020, 24.
If everybody, if everybody else reads it the same way, then I would.
And then by October, provide relevant and timely professional development, that makes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're fine with October, yes.
Wait, October? Okay, yeah.
So this May's plan, October I can do staff development, gives us a full year to implement that plan.
There you go.
Evaluate the next summer.
Yeah.
Makes more sense.
That makes sense.
Just want to make sure the timeline is.
I think that makes sense.
Good catch.
Good catch. I think this is going to be something that we need to work on, and then we need to periodically come back and go, how's it going? Do we need to make any changes? This is our, this is a big plan.
Bill.
Yeah.
It's a moving target sometimes.
It is, it is. So do we want to approve this as our strategic plan? So I will be looking for a motion to approve the school district's strategic plan for 2023 to 2028. So this is a five-year plan, so it's like, got room for lots of growth. Okay? So I will.
I'll make a motion to approve it. We have to acknowledge that that 2024 changed.
Yeah.
With that, with that change to objective 1.2 to August of 2024.
Okay. Thank you, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So we're getting down there, guys. This you've seen a number of times, and this is the different committees, and we've talked about who wants to be on what committee a couple of different times. But since we've had some changes in the board, we've decided to take a look at this more officially in April, when we are back to being a full board again. So this will come to you again in your getting ready for the April meeting, and we would really like you to take some time to think about what committees you want to be on. If you, if you said yes to a committee before, but you're like, I didn't really realize that's what it meant, because, you know, we're, a lot of us are new to this, then you can change your mind, or you can be like, oh, I really wish I would have been on that committee. So we're just kind of, kind of start at ground zero in April, and we're going to fill up these committees, okay? So you can take time to think about what might interest you.
Do we need to have a motion to table that?
No, this was just discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I did attend today the Mauer County Collaborative, which was very interesting. And the Mauer County Collaborative is, works together to provide support to families in our county. And they had two people speak today, and one was this, was, her name was Barb Sorum, and she represents the Family Wise, I had never heard of this before, but it's called Family Wise Services. And they connect for, they help families with children with mental health issues and family services collaboratives. And the whole state of Minnesota has something called More Resilient Minnesota. And it's like educating your communities to better understand the things that help affect the brain development and the positive development of, from early childhood until workforce. They call it from cradle to, it's kind of funny, cute kind of a thing. But anyway, they're going to partner with this group, and she's going to help them to have more assets for ways to help families.